So I can do it, don't you, don't you?
Yeah.
The scene, is it being dark here?
A little bit.
Yeah.
Got a lot out there.
Let's look at that. Yeah. Out there. People all across.
I'll fix that one. I have some on the left.
So we're crewing from within the greens.
They were, you know, we had, it looked like a used car around us. People forked out in the grass and up the lot. This morning I went out, still had one strand.
Get a subdivision plant on the corner.
I'm telling you. Nine calls.
We're right down at Tim's deal.
Yeah, Tim's limit.
Last time we just got there one crew.
It just so happened my house was a convenience.
And probably you didn't get to be avoiding for the meat business.
No.
My siblings would love to go be in for rhythm and roots. Changing jobs kind of put us.
Things he came in Saturday, went back this morning.
That warned me.
If they can get that.
Yeah. It'd be cheaper to.
I know.
How are you? You like a copy of the parking agent?
It was for good.
There you go.
Thanksgiving after, we have a great benefit. There was a lot of days off, but not in the first sixty days.
Ah, yeah. Cam, how do you do it, though?
I'm well, how are you?
Good?
Good.
Say what? Mason's got the big seat today, that's good.
Yeah, I don't know if does the big seat.
Is, uh, Mr. Moraney and, uh, Jason not going to be here?
Jason is not on day three.
Jimmy's on his way.
Jimmy's on.
Should be here.
Scott's not going to be here.
No, Scott's not.
Scott will not be here.
I still think things is dinner time.
There he is, right on time.
I need it.
All right, let's go ahead and start a meeting tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September graduate meeting of Town of Avenue Planning Commission. Mason, can you give us a roll call for attendance, please? Is there Mr. Sprouls?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson is absent. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Ranny?
Here.
Mr. Schuman?
Here.
And Mr. Austin?
Here.
We have a call. All right, thank you very much, sir. Attached to the agenda that was provided to you earlier is a copy of the proposed August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those? Any changes or corrections? If not, it'd be pleased to entertain a motion to approve them as provided to us.
So.
How many questions? All right. Did you get the? I first heard Mr. Schuman make.
Okay. Thank you without want to thank you.
Yes, you're most welcome, most welcome. And I believe I heard Mr. Anderson second that motion, so is there any additional discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, have an opportunity to receive any public comments at this time. I looked at the sheet as I came in, did not see anyone that had signed up for public comment time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to take advantage of that? Please let us know. Come to the podium. All right, we will have a public hearing, which is next on our agenda. I'd like to call that public hearing to order at this time. You'll have the opportunity to address the commission on the issue that is before us tonight in this public hearing before I, and I do declare that it is open for comment. The public hearing is concerning a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article seventeen, section seventeen dash four, uses not provided for. Currently, that section, and I think you have it in your agenda, but I'll go over it very briefly. If in any district established under this ordinance, a use is not specifically permitted and an application is made by a property owner to the administrator for such use, the administrator shall refer the application to the planning commission, which shall make its recommendation within thirty days. If the recommendation of the planning commission is approved by the town council, the ordinance shall be amended to list the use as permitted, as a permitted use in that district. Henceforth, the fee shall be charged as required in section twenty-four dash one dash five. This is the, and the proposed amendment to seventeen dash four is to repeal that. I know that each of you have received comments that were directed to us from the county. I received that mailing the other day. And I call your attention to that. That was sent to us by Lucy Phillips, the county attorney. It's also sent to the, to the town council. Any other, any comments to open this from the planning commission than I'm going to ask any public comments?
I would suggest that, um, that the letter from Ms. Phillips be included in the minutes from tonight and that, um, that the, that the conditioners should at least acknowledge that they've received it and read it. I think that would be appropriate since there's nobody here from the county to address it. So I would suggest we do that. I don't know if that probably needs a motion, but.
I think the chair can probably, you can note that on the record.
I will ask that that be marked and placed in the file as a public comment. So if you, I'm sure you, you do have a copy of it.
I did not, but I can.
We, yeah, we can send it to you.
Okay. Let's do attach that and recognize that as a public comment from the county. Well taken, thank you. All right, at this time, I will invite any member of the public to make any comment regarding the repeal of section seventeen dash four. All right, having no public comment in regards to that, I will declare that the public hearing is concluded at this time. And I will ask the members of the commission for their thoughts and their comments concerning the repeal of this section.
So we're being asked to read that, that section according to the, the material that you just read from.
Actually, we're asked to repeal or to recommend to the town council that that be repealed. The county, in the comments that we received a moment ago as a public comment, they are suggesting that an amendment be made to it rather than an appeal. And that amendment that they are suggesting is saying this, after review of the planning commission recommendation, the council may initiate procedures in accordance with state law for consideration of adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance in accordance with the property owner's application. And to delete the portion that says if the recommendation of the planning commission is approved by the town council, the ordinance shall be amended to list the use as a permitted use in that district.
The requirement of the planning commission is it has to make its recommendation within thirty days.
That's correct.
I think that's kind of limiting if it's something that the planning commission wishes to study and table for future consideration. It can't get done in thirty days. So could it be changed to, to say the planning commission shall make its initial consideration within thirty days?
Well, there are a number of the, uh, a number of the ordinances that are in the zoning ordinance that provide that if we don't take action within a limited period of time, that those things move forward regardless of what our, our position would be in regards to it. This is one of several that are in the zoning ordinance. I think that we could give some consideration to that, yes, sir. But I think we'd need to set a set time for it.
Maybe they would give the planning commission sixty days or eighty days.
Yes.
To consider.
Mr. Chair, I, I wanted our town attorney just to speak a little bit about the background on this before we deliberate a little bit further. One thing, and I, and, um, Mr. Bradley did bring up at a work session last week about his desire to amend it. And we had previously, staff had previously done some research on what some of the other communities are doing with this specific matter. And actually, we did bring some that might be helpful to you to see what some, some communities are doing with it. Some, uh, don't necessarily acknowledge a mandatory right by a person to come in and request a text amendment and then have that be responded to in a certain period of time. And I, I think a couple of the ones we have here are, are good, good starting points if we didn't want to repeal it, if we wanted to amend it. But if, if you don't mind, um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Cam to come up and speak at least a bit about the context of where, where we came up with this concept.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the commission. As background, I'm sure it's, you've read about it in the paper, there's a, a running dispute between the town and the county on certain issues. The, the, how this initially, well, this particular issue started, the county, um, along with the town center LLC had filed an application pursuant to this ordinance to add courthouse in B two general business district as a permitted use in that district. So in responding to that, I started doing some research and, and the, the state statute at issue is fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-six A seven. And a little bit of background, um, there is, in sort of zoning parlance, there is a zoning text amendment, which essentially is.
Let me interrupt you just a second. If you will look at as an attachment to what we had filed a moment ago, twenty-two eighty-six that it's referring to, if anyone wants to follow through with that, it's attached to.
Right, and, and Ms. Phillips has attached that A seven, which is the pertinent one.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a zoning text amendment, which essentially a, a amendment to the ordinance itself, which of course could only be voted on by council if it can be initiated by a motion from the planning commission. And there's also a zoning map amendment, which in general parlance would be a rezoning of a property for the specific district at issue. If you'll, if you'll read this, and it may take you several times, maybe contextual read better than me. It took me several times to figure this out. But towards the middle of that paragraph, it says, any such amendment may be initiated. And, and that's the key to, I think, to why the council has recommended that we repeal this particular section is the initiation. One, by resolution of the governing body, in this case, the town council. Two, by motion of the local planning commission. Or three, by petition of the owner, contract purchaser with the owner's written consent or owner's agent therefore, of the property which is the subject of the proposed zoning map amendment. So the interpretation of that is, one and two are for zoning text amendments. Two, an amendment of the actual ordinance can only be initiated by the town council or a motion by the planning commission. Unless you're doing a zoning map amendment, which can be initiated by the owner, contract purchaser with the owner's written consent or owner's agent. So there's a distinction there between whether you're talking about a rezoning, which could be asked for by the owner or prospective owner, or an actual amendment of the ordinance. And if you look to seventeen dash four that we're talking about, it sets forth this mandatory procedure whereby an owner can suggest what would be essentially a zoning text amendment to add a use to the ordinance of that particular district, which can be initiated in that instance by an owner. And then if that person files this application with the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator shall, it's a mandatory process, has to send that to planning commission. Planning commission shall make a determination, as Mr. Bradley said, within thirty days. And then council has to act on it. So it, in my view, establishes a, a procedure that isn't allowed by the statute for a zoning text amendment. It's allowing an owner to come in to set forth this mandatory procedure from the beginning, which, which could happen for a rezoning, but I, I think is inappropriate for an amendment to the ordinance. So that's sort of the background to that. That is not to say, and most of the, the letter from the county seems to be agreeing somewhat on this point. That is not to say that the planning commission doesn't allow public comment, that the town council doesn't allow public comment, that the zoning administrator's office isn't open to the public. What the difference would be is it doesn't set forth this mandatory procedure where it's initiated by the owner and has to act on anyone who fills out the form saying, I want to add X, Y, and Z use to that particular zoning district, sets forth this, this automatic mandatory procedure. And for the most part, my interpretation of, of Ms. Phillips' letter is that we're not wrong about that interpretation, but she's suggesting that the planning commission consider a, a permissive procedure where the zoning administrator may, where the planning commission may act on this application as opposed to the mandatory procedure. It, it seems to me, and this is more a legislative deliberative decision than it is a legal one, but it would be better to eliminate this mandatory procedure from the ordinance altogether and let the, the, the staff act on things as they see fit rather than establish this mandatory procedure. And I think Mr. Ranny has some other suggestions, as he mentioned, where the statute goes on to say that you can add in your ordinance, uh, review of the ordinances in general over a certain period of time. Some other places have an annual review of whether uses should be added to specific districts every year rather than set forth this mandatory procedure. So that's, I think, well, not in a nutshell necessarily, but a shorter version of how we got to where we are.
Thank you. Any one have any questions, Mr. Bailey?
I mean, it seems to me that when you get into this mandatory type thing, that you could have, and this is what bothers me, I think, in terms of, of the current concern is, you could have somebody come forward with something that would be in effect spot zoning, or it could be something that was basically, has no place in what we would normally deliberate. And all of a sudden, you would be forced to deal with that in a way that should be dealt with with staff, head or something like that. So you wouldn't get into a situation where you'd be facing somebody with the public saying, well, I'm hearing you. But you can't do that, whether it's spot zoning or, or another type of issue. But this case appears to me to be a spot zoning issue.
I won't speak to that specifically, but in general, you're right. It would set up a, a procedure where it could be, the gatekeeping function is basically eliminated by staff, that they have to act on anybody who says anything. If you want to add a nuclear power plant facility to resident R one, then the zoning administrator would have to send that to planning commission.
And keep in mind, what Cam said earlier is, if staff discourages somebody and says, hey, look, this isn't consistent with their comprehensive plan, if you have, you have another remedy and it's to come to a planning commission meeting and speak under public comment, or come to a town council meeting and say, hey, you know, I'm here to appeal to you directly. And as Cam said, as the statute says, the planning commission can make by motion to initiate that process. Planning commission's not always going to agree with staff. So, you know, I always, we like to be the gatekeeper, but we're not the end all. I mean, there's still other remedies for somebody to seek. But usually, I'd like to think that staff helps try to weed that out so we're not dealing, the planning commission's not dealing with, with requests that. And we also like to think, well, we know this is necessarily going to be a challenge to get through the planning commission because maybe we've dealt with a similar issue before. But all we could give is advice, but ultimately, it's their right if they want to come and speak about it. So we're not eliminating public input or, or the ability for somebody to come in and request a change. We're just eliminating this mandatory right that they have currently.
And again, from a, a legal perspective and, and villain's rule issue, I, I think anyway, if you look at that twenty-two eighty-six A seven, the only authorization that the state legislature has given to us is for the initiation of that procedure is either by council or a motion of the planning commission. It hasn't set, and it makes that weirdly worded distinction in three, but it appears to have been making a, a specific distinction between a zoning text amendment that can only be initiated by those two bodies and a rezoning that can be initiated by someone else. So I, I think a, a strict reading of that is that seventeen dash four is just unenforceable as void because it goes beyond the authorization that the, the state legislature has given us to enact that ordinance in the first place as regards to a zoning text amendment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments while Mr. Bailey's up?
Thank you.
Cam, so one, one little thing, but I maybe I've confused you, but a rezoning has to be initiated by, by the owner?
It can be by all three. I think.
Well, they get a procedural right to come in according to our code. And as the statute has permitted us to do, they can initiate a rezoning, a zoning map amendment to their property. If I want to be rezoned from residential to commercial, I could file an application, turn it into the zoning administrator. That automatically gets referred to, um, planning commission.
Right. But I, I think the town council could do that by resolution, or the planning commission can make a motion for a rezoning, or the owner could do it. But as to an actual amendment to the ordinance, which would have to happen to add a permitted use, that can only be done by council itself or based on a motion of the planning commission.
Because that affects the regulations to the entire district and not just that one property.
And again, that's kind of semantics. I mean, if I, if I come in, if I come to Bradley's, to Stonewall and yell at you that I need this added and you make the motion at planning commission, at planning commission, or you make one at council, then you're the one who technically procedurally initiated that process, but the citizen can still have their own rights to go in and lobby you to make that motion.
The subtle distinction here is that a rezoning can be made by the, by the owner, but the text amendment cannot be made.
Correct. That, that's my interpretation of that statute.
Thank you.
And just so, what we passed out was, um, Jason had done some research a while back. I had asked him to look at what other communities were doing. And we didn't actually title the two documents that you had, but Mason put an asterisk by the, the section I was going to point out. Just other examples of how other towns are dealing with it. And then, did you pass it out, right?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not stapled, they shouldn't be with the agenda, they're actually separate from the agenda.
Correct.
Okay. So there's one that has.
In the back.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been in the very back. There's one where the title of it, it says Division Five zoning amendments. That's actually the town of Blacksburg. And then there's another one with the title Article Eight, and it's called amendments. And that's actually the town of Vinton, uh, which is near Roanoke. So there's an asterisk. If you look at the one from, um, say the one, the one from Vinton, the one that says Article Eight amendments, section eight point two, it says, and this is what Cam was speaking of, it says initiation of amendments. And then it talks about the three ways that a zoning text amendment can be initiated. And it actually goes through and mirrors the statute where it says, A, a resolution by the town council, B, a motion of the planning commission, or C, petition of a property owner. And it talks, a petition to change the zoning classification of a property by amendment to the official zoning, zoning map. So that's an option, but I don't, I think because, I mean, the authority is already there from the statute. I don't know if we need to reiterate that in the code or not. If so, we probably need to put it in a different section. I don't think amending this or repealing this section now is going to prevent us from doing it. But it's something that we could revisit later when we redo the zoning code. The other one, which I found kind of interesting, um, it's.
Blacksburg.
Yeah, it's Blacksburg. It says Division Five zoning amendments, section eleven fifty, number four. It says, any person may submit suggestions for zoning ordinance text amendments to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator shall forward these requests to the appropriate committee of the planning commission for consideration during the annual zoning ordinance review. Now, that one is mandatory, they shall, so it kind of, it's still kind of a, maybe a gray area whether or not this is something that would be in conflict with statute. But it's basically saying, hey, if you have a suggestion, it doesn't say application, if you have a suggestion, you'll forward it to the planning commission. It doesn't mean that during the year, if somebody comes up to the town or to the zoning administrator and says, hey, I like, I think, you know, this use is incompatible with the zoning district, it should be removed, or vice versa, that the staff can't bring that to the attention of the, of the planning commission. Uh, it just allows it. So that's just another way that they deal with it. But none, in none of this, in none of these two, do I see a, a mandatory provision of that it must go to the planning commission other than this quasi, you know, but it doesn't annually, it doesn't do it within the thirty days. So those are just two I wanted to present just for discussion purposes. I, I certainly feel that we should just repeal it. And it, it removes all doubt that it's not a, it's not a mandatory provision. It doesn't mean when we redo the zoning ordinance, it doesn't happen that often. I think this is only the second one in recent memory that we've even dealt with. Um, in fact, one of our employees couldn't even remember the last time this happened. So it's, it's not like this happens that often. But anyways, that's, that's just my opinion. I think we should just move with the removal, but be happy to talk about any of these if we decide to do amend it instead.
All right, any other thoughts or comments from the commission? Whatever is done here would not be in the form of a recommendation to the town council for them to act on that. Be pleased to entertain any motions that you have.
The, the section eight point two here that you've taken from Vinton is exactly what's in the statute, so.
Correct.
Is there any, since it is in the statute, is there any, um, is there any? Is there any, since it is in the statute, is there any, is there any real reason to adopt something like that? In other words--
I'd have to look back, and since this is specifically referring to the zoning map amendment, I don't recall what section of the zoning code zoning map amendments are.
It's in that same section.
It's in that same? No, I'm talking about for, in our code.
Oh.
In our code. I don't know where it is in there, I just don't remember. So my guess is that it's in, I believe it is in another section of our code.
But I guess--
Yeah.
Cam, if I could ask a question, let's suppose that we repeal the section we're talking about, and this section is available. It seems to me that we've actually done, we've actually adopted this because it's there. We, what we would, in essence, do is repeal the statute that we're talking about, and then if somebody came forward and said, "Well, wait a minute, you've not done the right thing," you could just refer them to this to say, "Here's your available remedies."
Yes, Mr.-- The state statute applies to us regardless of whether we have a similar ordinance.
So basically, all we need to do is if we do repeal the amendment we're talking about, if somebody raises a question, you can just direct them with the state statute and say, "There's your remedy." Is that correct?
Correct. And we've actually run into issues in other parts of our code ordinances where we've cut and pasted the state statute, but the state statute has been updated and our ordinances have not been updated, so we've run into trouble by unions that way. I think it's just for ease of reference to know that it exists, but there's no legal reason to have it in both places.
So if we eliminate this section of the zoning ordinance, then we're not also eliminating the citizen's right to petition development rights?
Sure. I mean--
The zoning amendment, yeah.
Correct. I mean, the only thing that would affect would be this mandatory process that we have in place. It doesn't stop. For a zoning map amendment, then an owner can initiate that for a rezoning under the state statute. We don't disagree.
We're going to try to pull up our existing Section 17, general provisions, there should be one. We go up to four. I think it's actually in a different section. Close that. Go under, scroll down, I think it's under, I'm talking about, I'm referring to the zoning map amendment. Keep going. I think it's in a different section. Regulation, amendment, sorry, Article 25. So click on that one. We got interpretation amendments generally. Go up to 25. We got one, regulations. I'm trying to find the section where it talks about the zoning. We have a, we have a, an application for a zoning map amendment. It's confusing, because there's a very small portion of it that says, "Are you requesting a text amendment?" So it's actually very difficult, I think, for people to understand, to have both combined. It might be under general provisions, but regardless, the, what this section does, it doesn't remove anybody's ability to do that, the, for the map amendment, and it doesn't prohibit them from coming in and petitioning that.
There's another section somewhere that deals with the rezoning.
I believe there is, I just can't remember which section it's at. I thought it was under that amendment section, but it might be under the general provisions. But this doesn't even specifically refer to zoning map amendments, so by removing it, it doesn't affect anything that we're doing currently with zoning map amendments. So if somebody wanted to rezone their property, they wouldn't, the authority to do that wouldn't be under this provision anyways. Am I right, Cam? Since it specifically deals with permitted uses.
So are we being asked to consider this for an act from here?
To recommend, to repeal the section.
Repeal and recommend this as--
No, to repeal this entirely, to just delete it from the code, since it's in conflict with state statute. Maybe just reserve the section or renumber the chapter.
All right. Are there any motions?
Yeah, I'm going to move that we repeal Section 17.4, is that correct?
Yes. Of 17 dash four.
17 dash four. And we recommend that to the--
The town council. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded now. I will request any additional discussion. In regards to that, the motion is to recommend to the town council to repeal Section 17-4, not replace it with anything that just allow the state law to cover that portion. Any additional comments? All right. If not, Mason, would you have us roll call up, please? Yes, sir. Mr. Sproles?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Marini?
Aye.
Mr. Schuman?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
All right.
One thing I would give, just, sorry, just suggest is, since we have the letter of inquiry, I think what we ought to do is respond to that in some way and say, "Here's what we've done, here's if there's a, you know, this is what state law says, the remedy under state law remains." I just feel like that might not be a bad thing to do in order to, so it doesn't feel that we've been quite as abramorious as might be interpreted.
Since this is only the form of a recommendation to the town council, don't you think it might be more appropriate that they might do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, absolutely. And I mean, you wouldn't want to do it before there was a final.
Well, I mean, we could have staff send the letter and just say, "This was deliberate at the planning commission, you know, your information was provided and discussed, and here's the conclusion reached," and it'll go before the council. Yeah, we can do that.
I just think that--
Sure.
All right.
Trying to be the voice of reason.
Yes. All right. Let's move on on our agenda. Next, we have two certificates of appropriateness that have been filed. The first one is an application for a certificate of appropriateness. Marathon Realty Corporation owner, a COA for approval of the final plaque review for Washington Crossings, to subdivide the property into two parcels containing 8.32 acres, and the second parcel contained 3.22 acres located at Cunningham Street Tax Map ID Number 105A-2-16. All right, this is something that I believe has previously come before the planning commission on the initial approval, and is back this time for final plaque review. Is there a recommendation from staff? Mason, do you happen to have that?
Do you have, did he-- Okay.
Well, I just have a question.
What, Jason?
The request from staff. Staff has informed the developer of their preference to not restrict turning movements and to improve the retail center entrance exit. The reason for this position is that the town expects there to be connectivity at some point in the near future with the Meadows Development. Staff recommends approval of the final plaque as presented.
Mr. Spanglins, or anything you'd like to add?
I'm going to answer any questions, so presentation remains the same. I will point out that we did add that little, I guess called a leg that connects to the state right-of-way there. That was discussed, and that was actually incorporated into the final plaque.
I think we're talking about the--
That was for the signage?
Oh, okay, nevermind. Does anyone have any questions regarding this request for a COA, final plaque review?
I just want to interject something. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have had several discussions with the developer about the future of the use of that entrance into the shopping center plaza, and I just wanted everybody to be aware that we're working on a solution to eventually get that connector road accomplished through means of possibly a grant through VDOT. And so if the town were to able, were able to accomplish it, the developer would dedicate right-of-way to the town, which is what, where the existing entrance to the shopping center would be to connect that connector road, which would go to the, I guess it would be the north, is it northwest, west? Well, there it is. It faces, okay, so there, yeah, you're right, it'd be more north. So therefore, I mean, I know there were some concerns raised about traffic, but ideally, we think in the next few years, we're going to be able to get a good solution and be able to connect those roads. We've had some promising discussions with VDOT already. So there could be a separate agreement that the town and the developer will be entering into, and hopefully, it'll be mutually beneficial to both parties, so if there's any concern over that, I think in the long term, that will be addressed by what we're trying to do there. That's all I had.
All right. Any additional questions regarding this first COA? All right. Is there any motion in regards to it?
Will be approved.
Second?
A second.
All right. Mr. Anderson has seconded. Any additional discussion in regards to it? Let's do roll call, please. Mr. Sproles?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Marini?
Aye.
Mr. Schuman?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
All right. That has been approved. Next is a application for a certificate of appropriateness. Pizza Hut REO Holdings LLC. Owner, Stephen Hutton is the representative, Stephen K. Hutton and Associates, 245 East New Street, Suite 201, Kingsport, Tennessee. A COA for approval of new construction of a proposed Pizza Hut restaurant and tenant facility to be located at Castle Nine Meadows Development. All right. Yes, sir. If you'd like to come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I'm Steve Hutton. I think you read my address out, it's 245 East New Street in Kingsport. I'm actually the architect on the project.
All right.
It's sort of a rewind. We brought this before, and the developer wants to add a tenant space to it. Previous application, we had had the Pizza Hut to kind of one side of the lot, and it was reserved in the right side of the lot for future development, for future tenant. They decided to go ahead and combine them together in one building, and they're going to put the Pizza Hut on one side and tenant space on the other. They asked us to design the tenant space as if it could have a drive-through window with like an order board, McDonald's kind of drive-through, place your order, drive around, so. They don't have any particular tenant in mind at this point, we just set it up that way. Go back down to the site plan, I'll point it up, let me go ahead a little bit. This is the Pizza Hut, this is the tenant space. The idea that they put an order board down here, I can't really see, I'll just draw around that way. The Pizza Hut does have a pickup window, although, there you go. They don't, you don't, you will either order online or call your order in, maybe come pick it up. They say they never have more than one or two cars come to their window at times, so I guess people just don't wait in line for their pizzas, but anyway, so--
It's not make-to-order, they, well, it is when you're home--
You go home, you order, or call it in, or whatever, so. They've got a, they've got a pickup window here that they say maybe one or two cars possibly to line up, and like I said, this was the drive-through here. Let's see, I guess the Holiday Inn down this way, is that right?
Yes.
And the Powell's is over here on the side, so that's, it's kind of crossed from East and Prairie. That's all I know.
Any questions with Mr. Hutton?
So the exterior, in terms of what we were presenting before, is basically the same.
Yes. Slide up, can you slide the slide?
Move it. Is it many, or--
No, it's up, there's a picture of the exterior, the other way, I think. Yeah, I think what we looked at before was basically this half, and we've just doubled the width of it, so it's essentially the same thing.
That's why the word signage--
Yeah, the signage is, I started to put my name up.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Boswell about the stacking, and he seemed comfortable with it, and I think what the presenter said is right. Fast food restaurants typically aren't, they're not impul, or I mean, pizza places aren't typically impulse buys. You don't go, "Oh, let's turn off here and get a pizza," not like, "Let's turn off and get a Big Mac." You know, it's make-to-order, so I don't think there's going to be an issue there with stacking.
And you can, you can park and go inside--
Right, right, right.
--pick up a pizza. There's just no, there's no dining room in there, there's pictures.
Will there be two drive-through windows, one to serve each?
No. Yes, but, but what I'm saying, the Pizza Hut one is strictly, you've either called in and you're picking up your order. The tenant space, potentially, you could drive around the back and place an order like you would at McDonald's.
And they come around to the side?
They come around, pick it up.
It's got a longer queue.
Yeah, it's got more stack--
It's got a queue all the way around the back of the building there, yeah. I forget exactly how many we had, but quite a few there once.
More than likely, it could potentially be a fast service place. It would at least accommodate that with the amount of cars that they have staff for the drive-through.
So maybe next, back next month when they decide they don't want to do that one. But anyway, I just did what Jason told me to do, so, no.
Well, if you get everything approved, you don't have to come back at all--
I guess, no, I think--
--for a permutation.
That's, that's the way they're hoping to, hoping to mark in, I guess.
Have we considered this before?
Yes.
It was a standalone pizza day, it wasn't with the, it wasn't with the tenant.
You might have been at that meeting.
I don't think, I don't remember you being here.
You were gone at that meeting.
There's not really a submit could change in the appearance.
Now, the footprint's not changing, right? It's just--
The, actually, the site, the footprint of the building is doubled.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, because we put, we basically doubled it.
Exterior appearance remained--
It's the same, yes.
Essentially the same, other than the size.
Correct.
And I take it, when, you know, if you get a tenant, you're going to come in and you're basically going to slice the awning, the building, the logo, things like that?
I think they, I think they were hoping that, I think their idea was, the Pizza Hut people's idea was that the only thing that would change would be the sign up there.
Okay.
The awning would be red, all the way across, you know. It's Wayne's Barbecue or something, they'll put your name up there, or whatever, I don't know.
So we've got to have a tenant that wants the red logo color.
Yeah. Well, like I said, when they want to turn it green, I guess I'll be back.
Just not too soon.
All right. Any other questions in regards to this? All right. We can get those lights back up, please. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Entertain any motion in regards to this particular certificate of appropriateness.
I'll be with it.
All right. Mr. Bradley's moved that it be approved. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Additional discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Sproles?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Marini?
Aye.
Mr. Schuman?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
All right. That is approved. Moving on, next to our agenda is discussion, comprehensive plan update. As you can see, on the agenda is a community meeting scheduled for Monday, September the 30th at the Avenue and Community Center between 4:30 and 7:00. Topic is land use and transportation. Other comments in regards to that?
Just to the extent that the folks doing the comprehensive plan sent to the steering committee to review all of the, that they got from the first public meeting, and there have been comments accepted for that. And I think there's actually a meeting prior to this meeting, at 3:30 or something.
Okay. All right. Any old business or announcements that we need to make, or matters that are not on the agenda we need to discuss? All right. Hearing done, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.